I'd call the meeting in order if you would stand for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everyone and welcome everyone who's watching from home. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee DeVore?
Present.
Trustee Gett?
Present.
Trustee Kazam?
Present.
Trustee Reichert?
Present.
Trustee Wigginton?
Present.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Present.
All right, welcome everyone. Next is approval of the minutes from the Board of Trustees. Meeting on November 7th, 2023. I'd ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
It's been moved.
It's been moved and did I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions or corrections of the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next is presentation of a proclamation and flag for the 125th anniversary celebration presented by Peoria County. I did go down to the county board last, at their last meeting, and receive a proclamation. Is that what you're reading tonight, Danny?
Yeah.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you. Mayor Phelan and Board of Trustees, as the mayor mentioned, we provided this proclamation to the village of Peoria Heights just a short time ago, but we wanted to make sure that we did it here. That was important to us and we brought a flag with us as well tonight. For those of you in the audience that do not know me, my name is Danny Phelan. I am the Peoria County Board Representative for District 9 and that covers Peoria Heights. Whereas Peoria County wishes to recognize the village of Peoria Heights on the occasion of its 125th anniversary, and whereas Peoria Heights was incorporated in 1898 as Prospect Heights before residents realized another area near Chicago had already chartered under that name resulting in renaming the village to its current title circa 1901. And whereas in the village's 125 years, it has cemented its place in the American history through such accomplishments as being the birthplace of the first gasoline-powered automobile, hosting one of the first amusement parks in the Midwest, and maintaining the world's most beautiful drive. And whereas Peoria Heights has shown unlimited motivation in creating a village of thriving businesses, services, schools, restaurants, shops, religious institutions, music venues, galleries, and more, generously fulfilling the undeniing human need of community and togetherness. And whereas Peoria Heights has shown unlimited motivation, excuse me, whereas Peoria County is both confident and proud that Peoria Heights will continue as a prime example of a successful village and pure American opportunity for the next 125 years. Now therefore, I, James C. Dillon, Chairman of the Peoria County Board, on behalf of the county board, do hereby recognize the village of Peoria Heights on the occasion of its 125th celebration and congratulate the village for its historical significance. With us tonight, we brought a flag that is actually over in the corner, and this is an updated flag. Peoria County recently did an update in November of '22. We adopted this flag. There were around 1,700 votes cast. It does have a couple things that I'd like to point out to you tonight. The first thing is that the river is featured in the bottom right, and, thank you Nick. The river is to symbolize how our region's growth flows from its resources. The blue on the flag is to represent water and the natural resources in our county. Green stands for agricultural roots and an industry that is significant in the area. Gold symbolizes our innovation across the industry in Peoria County. And the yellow circle and the blue border form the letter P in the top left, representative of the county's name. So we wanted to gift that to the village of Peoria Heights and we hope that you would prominently display it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'll have to ask one of the veterans or people who know the flag etiquette of where that belongs. I assume it's in the right place.
That's up to you.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. We would be at comments from the audience. If anyone would like to address the board tonight, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and try and keep your marks under five minutes. Yes, Ms. Lockhart.
Anne Lockhart, 722 East Marietta. I know the water rates are going to go up no matter which way you go. My only concern is we are still on the three-month water bill and the garbage bill is included in that. Is there any way, and I know it's a financial thing, that we could go to monthly bills because we have many citizens, especially in the winter in this economy, who struggle with their three-month bill? I know there's, they can apply for assistance, but many of them refuse to do that for one reason or another. I'd just like for you to take that into consideration.
Thank you. And for those of you who've been around here longer than me, I'm going to assume, Mr. Administrator, that the three-month is, is that to save on postage?
Well, for many reasons, I'll refer to Stephanie Turner because I'm sure she started this, and also Chris Chandler probably has a couple comments about that. But I'm sure it would be a policy decision to make moving forward at the end of the budget year if we end up going that route. But there are some pros and cons. Stephanie, if you'd like to.
So first of all, the insurance or the postage costs would obviously triple because we would be mailing out bills instead of once every three months. We would be mailing about every bill every month. So the current postage costs, I believe, are around $10,000, but I can look up an exact amount for the board, which would increase significantly, which would obviously need to be passed along to the residents as well. The additional concern is that at this point in time, staff would be a problem. Most likely, we would have to consider adding additional staff in order to handle the amount of response to having monthly bills. Right now, one staff member is able to handle 900 bills, so having 2,500 people coming in, paying their bills, processing all the payments would be beyond the staff that we have. That being said, I do know that the water account technician is, and administration has found a new online bill portal that is supposed to be making payments easier to do online and payments by phone. We have not had it in place long enough yet to see whether enough traffic has moved over to that portal in order to free up time, in order to do bills bi-monthly, but that was a consideration that staff was going to be looking into as that kind of progresses.
If the board decided to, like I said, it'd be a budget issue. If you decided to go that route, we would have to look at additional employees, as Stephanie mentioned. But again, it would be something we could discuss prior to the, prior to the next budget.
A few comments. I absolutely love the new portal, that I can pay it with PayPal.
I'll pass that along. She'll be glad to hear that.
Yeah, I paid my last one with PayPal. I liked it. So if we went to the monthly billing, would we be able to offer some customers the option to go to e-billing so we wouldn't have to mail anything at all? Can that work with water payments?
The current ordinance prohibits it, but the board could change that as a matter of policy.
Yeah, that might help offset some of that, that cost.
Yes, it definitely would.
Because I'll admit, last night I get that bill, most times I'm like, oh, water bills, do. Hanging up in the thing, a couple weeks later, the red bill shows up, I'm like, oh. But if I had an email, I know I'm horrible with papers, so if I had an email that I could tag, I wouldn't.
Well, there's some residents that don't have access to computers either, so it's kind of a catch-22. I hear a little of both, from both sides.
Right. And do we have an assistance program, like a low-income assistance program for the water rates?
Yes.
Do we?
Yes, in fact, we're going to use some of the grant money that we, that we received last year for some of that, and I believe it was approximately $80,000 that we discussed.
That's the current, yes.
Yes, okay.
Also, Trustee Weisenberg, the township helps with low income, those who qualify with water bills.
Okay, that's great.
Would it be complicated to have some people opt in for monthly if that was what their needs were?
Yeah, that's something I was just thinking of because I think my pays are monthly online.
Monthly. It, yes, yes. I will definitely, per the board and administration, that's definitely something that could be discussed in greater detail with Superintendent Chandler and the water count technician Emily Smazur. But off the top of my head, I don't think of an easy way to do it, but let me think about it.
I didn't know what kind of system or program we were using, if it was something that was, you know, user-friendly in that way.
Like Chief Sutton said, it's definitely a budget concern and the budget would be coming up soon, so this is definitely something that staff will take into consideration when we're doing the budget because I'm hearing, I'm hearing what everyone is saying and the concern.
I'd also like to add that on top of the, you know, 2,500 bills in one month, we would also be reading 2,500 meters in one month.
I knew I forgot something.
Which for, you know, an upgrade to our current system, we could handle that, but it would require probably, just to guess, maybe a $30,000 investment to get that to where we would be able to read those every month, just to get that information.
Are those collected automatically?
We drive by right now, the radio, we drive by, but if we invested in a stronger radio, we would, we would be able to pick them up a lot faster, so.
Would there be a way to alternate the months based on the area of the heights that you live in? Kind of divide them up?
You're saying if you went bi-monthly or?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that's what we do right now. Like right now, just south of Glen is Book One.
Okay.
Everything else above the hills, Book Two, and then below the hill or something, something along those lines.
Yeah, I'll get together with you.
Yeah, sure.
Mr. Administrator, would you report back to us some of the pros and cons of changing this at the next meeting?
Of course.
There would be, I will say also, just a pro for going monthly is if there is a water leak, right now sometimes those are not noticed for three months and it can be a big leak.
I had that problem.
People have a, they don't believe that that much water went through their meter, but over three months, a lot of water can go through a meter. Well, if you went every month, that would, that would certainly cut something like that down.
Yeah, that's a good point because I had that problem. I had a hose in my garden that I left on, like in September, and in November, maybe late October I noticed it, and the water office called me and they said, you got a lot, you use a lot of water. I'm like, what? So that hose was on longer than I thought, but.
And Emily tries to catch those as often as she can.
Yeah, she's the one that called me and gave me the warning about the bill that was coming, but what can you do?
Thanks, everyone, for your input. We'll get back, we'll bring this back up, and thank you, Anne, for bringing this to our attention. We're still under public comment. If there's anyone else who would like to comment, please come forward. Hi, Jay.
Jay Groover, 3814 North Monroe, Peoria Heights, Illinois. Yay for the new flag. I just wanted to say I'm excited that we're working on figuring out how to do the water. As an accountant, I would offer that you can still read it every three months and give people one-month payments potentially. I don't know. Like you don't necessarily have to mail it every month in order to give people the right to pay it, one-third, one-third, one-third or something. There could be an election, I'm not sure, but it's a, it's a thought. And I'm excited that we're gonna hopefully do the work that it takes to upgrade our water system so that we can keep it. So I just wanted to bring that topic up. Have a wonderful day.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just have a statement. I want to thank whoever for fixing the audio problem here tonight.
We're working on it. It's not fixed, but thank you.
It's not a lot here.
Well, and I don't hear the HVAC tonight running as loud as I usually do, but we're going to improve it even further, but thanks, thanks much. Any other comments? Comments from the audience going once, twice, comments from the audience are closed. We'd be at old business. Any old business come for the board?
I can, if I, if everybody would like to hear, I can give kind of an update on where we're at with the water improvements that were in the first year of the capital improvement plan.
Yes, please do. Thank you, Chris.
Me and Stephanie went over some stuff and this is kind of where we're at. So the water treatment upgrade, which is the manganese filtration plant, the whole plant, we had planned $150,000. Woodard and Curran is doing that and we've spent $15,000 of that already. We have, the EPA required us to put flow meters in all our, in all our wells, so we have purchased, the three that we needed have been purchased. One of them has been installed and those meters were $13,000, $13,250. And, and one of those has been installed and $2,000 has been spent to install one of those so far. And our lead service line inventory is underway with Woodard and Curran. That was a $40,000 grant, I believe, that is in progress. We still need to have a hydraulic model done, which they thought would be about $75,000. That has not been done yet, but we will be doing it in this budget year. And then there's a Lake Avenue Water Main replacement that was in that, and it's just the engineering phase of that, but we don't think that's going to take place in this budget anyway. But just wanted to give everybody an update with what we've been doing with all that.
I will also just note to the board that the money for the engineering that was in the capital improvement plan will be set aside. So it's been budgeted for and we will set aside the money for the engineering if the engineering does not begin this year.
Chris, could you also give an update on the dates for the ice picking?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Anybody who's here noticed the big trucks out here, the ice picking trucks. That will start Monday, the 27th, right here in this Montclair neighborhood here. And we sent letters out to everybody who's going to be part of that process, and we will hang a tag on your day, on your door the day before that occurs in your area. So like tomorrow, we're hanging tags for Monday because, you know, we won't be here for the weekend, so those tags are going to start getting hung out. And it's, we won't start until nine o'clock in the morning, so everybody will be able to get their showers and get their kids off to school and not worry about anything. And it should be done by about one in the afternoon. And simple salt slurry that goes through, if you turn your water on, salty taste, just run it for two or three minutes, it should flush out.
So will their water be off at any time during?
It will not be off.
Okay.
But we would request that, try not to use it if possible, just to avoid getting it in your house.
Okay.
Basically. It's not harmful, but you don't want to, if you don't want it in there, you know, if you can avoid using it, yeah.
A few questions, Chris.
Sure.
Which customers are going to be affected by that? Which area?
So it's going to be this Montclair neighborhood, so from here basically to the trail north.
Kingman?
Kingman, Montclair, Euclid, Lakeside, Claritin, Humboldt, Belmont, Bellevue, Park, and Prospect, and Glen, Summer Glen. And then also Toledo, Marietta, Manita, Sciota, Atlantic, Illinois, California, Voss. I don't think I left anybody out.
Okay. Could you do me a favor? Could you email that to me?
Sure.
That was a lot of streets, in case I get questions.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's basically the Toledo area, Glen, north, and, but yeah, I can definitely send you a list.
When, when that ice picking starts, so the water, the ice and salt slurry goes in, and then is there also an exit for it or is it a state system?
Yeah, so like the first run, they'll do, there's a hydrant right over here at Park Street. They'll put it in that hydrant and the water pressure will push it along, will close valves strategically. The water pressure will push it along and it will exit hydrant at, down by the triangle by Lyons Park. So that will clean that main. And then the next day, we put in a different one, close valves, and it runs. And it's strategically closing valves and the pressure never goes down. The water pressure just pushes it where it needs to go.
Nice. You had said the $150,000 had been spent towards the filtration plant, part of the strategic plan.
That's what was budgeted for that.
Right.
Yeah.
For the manganese filtration. When is that going to be, when are we going to be at a point where we're filtering the manganese?
So that was for the treatment design and the SRF application, the State Revolving Fund application. So once they get that approved, I believe they may have put the application in already.
I believe so.
It's just, you know, it takes a while to get it approved. And once it gets approved, then it would be, okay, let's start implementing the design and seeing what we need to do to get it.
So the $150,000 was for Phase One?
Lot of Phase One.
That's much as I've been doing. Okay, thank you.
But it's design, it's design, design and engineering.
Yeah, they're, they're figuring out how much it will cost and where it can go and stuff like that.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question about the ice picking. So we go in one hydrant and then we come out the other.
Yep.
So what happens to the ice slurry when it comes out?
So it will, it, it will go into the storm drain.
Okay.
So similar to our hydrant flushing program?
Yeah, just like, just like when we flush hydrants, yeah.
Are we expecting to see a lot coming, I mean, what are we expecting?
Is there going to be a show?
Yeah. Should we show up with popcorn and like watch all this stuff come out?
If someone wanted to, yes, they certainly could. Yeah, we're, we're expecting to see some stuff get cleaned out of there for sure.
Okay, we're going to be doing the entire village, right?
Well, this.
I think what they're trying to do is see if this is actually works.
See how effective this will be, yes.
Okay, so this is just this area for now? We haven't located, picked a time or a date to do the rest of the heights?
Not yet, no.
Okay, so.
It's a, it's a pretty significant investment and, you know, we didn't want to just say, okay, we're just going to spend it all and it not work as well as we thought it might, basically.
What was that investment again?
I believe it was $180,000, maybe a little more.
Communities that have done the ice picking, do you see they, do you find that they do it on like a, like a preventative maintenance schedule? Do they do it every two years, every one year?
I don't know if it's that often, you know. I think that once they do, do it and they get the result that, that they, that they want, then they might consider doing it more often, obviously, but we, we haven't done it in 100 years, so.
Right.
You know.
I know we had done something in the past where we used chemicals to knock that stuff loose, if I remember correctly.
Um, I don't know, not while I was here.
Okay. When Trustee Goff was here, he said that.
Oh, there was a, I know what you're talking about. They did, they opted not to do that.
Okay.
Because it, because it would have produced brown water for, for, for everyone for a period of time.
That's what he said.
And they didn't, they didn't want to take that on, obviously.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Supervisor Chandler, the dollar amounts that you previously stated for all the things, that's all been budgeted for already? That was in?
Yes, that was in this current budget, yeah. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
So while, while we're on that topic, you had asked us to get together and figure out next steps. So recently Dustin and I and Wayne and Trustee DeVore met to discuss what the next steps might look like. We like Woodard and Curran. We wanted to make sure that utilizing their experience for qualificate, request for qualifications was okay with Attorney Walton, I believe you agree with that, since we've already engaged them in a contract to begin with. So next week, we have a call with Woodard and Curran to talk to them about asking them to do more due diligence when we consider a sell of the water company and just to bring you that information. Wayne, is there anything else you want to add to that?
No, I think just to determine the scope, you know, exchange ideas, they've been through this before, to make sure that we're gathering all the appropriate information.
So we should have that information when we meet again. Trustee DeVore, anything you want to add?
Nope.
Okay. Any other old business? Let's get into new business. The first is ordinance 2023-1715 and ordinance amending Title VIII, Chapter 2A of the Village Code of the Village of Peoria Heights for the purpose of establishing water rates in the village of Peoria Heights, Illinois. Trustee DeVore had asked for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve ordinance 2023-1715.
Second. Okay, go ahead, Trustee DeVore.
Okay, so this would be an ordinance to move forward with raising the water rates as we have previously discussed. So this would raise the rates 10%, which is our first-year increase based on the layout or comprehensive plan for the water that we had set with Woodard and Curran from that first meeting. So in order to keep funding these things like Superintendent Chandler is talking about the infrastructure updates, we have to start implementing a higher rate of water increase. So this is the first step of that.
When would the second increment happen?
Each year.
Each year, it's annual.
Why are the minimum charges different between residential accounts and business accounts? I mean, the, a minimum charge should be a minimum charge. Why would it vary between businesses and residential? Does it cost us less?
The businesses are billed monthly, so the minimum for the business is for one month of service versus.
Three months.
Residential is three months.
So we're already billing people monthly for water?
Just the businesses. There's approximately 250.
260, something like that, yeah.
Okay. I didn't realize we were billing businesses monthly.
Any other questions? Discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Reichert?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg, Wigginton?
Nay.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, that passes with one opposed. Next, we have resolution 2023-17, a resolution of the village of Peoria Heights approving a request for qualifications and appointing a selection committee. Trustee Kazam had asked for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, go ahead, please.
So this resolution pertains to Prospect Road and the grant money that we received to embark on the Phase One engineering process. Part of that grant requires us to obviously submit an RFQ, request for qualifications for an engineering firm, and also appoint a committee of people that will oversee that RFQ. I'm sure Wayne may have more to add to that.
Yes, so this, again, RFQ for a consultant team for Prospect Road, so this is kind of what we've been waiting to do, to engage a consultant team to get start on that project. The RFQ will be issued officially by Tri-County Regional Planning Commission on Monday if this gets approved, so. And also in accordance with the quality-based selection policy you approved several weeks ago, this resolution gives you a proposed selection committee that will help select this consultant. Probably timeframe, I think the proposals will be sometime in January and then give the selection committee several weeks to review the proposals. And then typically bring in several consultants, three to five, usually at least three consultants for interviews on a project this large. So the selection committee will meet with the top-ranked consultant teams and then formally suggest a consultant team to negotiate an agreement with after that. So it'll still take, you know, it may be late winter, early spring before we get started on this project. So on top of this, there'll be agreements, agreement obviously with the consultant team that's selected, and then I anticipate an agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation related to the grant funds as well. So they've been involved, they've reviewed the RFQ as well, so. So I think we're ready to go with this and I think it'll be an interesting process. Excited to get started on this project.
Questions?
So this is, this was for the Phase One engineering that we matched the, we got the $2 million, then we matched the $500,000.
Yes. So a part of this, and the RFQ is in your packet, so a part of this is actually helped with applying for additional grants. So a part of this, and the RFQ is in your packet, so a part of this is actually helped with applying for additional grants and things like this. So it's a fairly comprehensive scope of work in there. That's why we anticipate. We, you know, we know we're going to get a civil engineering firm probably lead the project, but there'll be other disciplines involved, including hopefully grant writers and others. But I think the RFQ allows, and I think the feds and the state allow this too, is once you select that team, if you like them and we get the grant funds, we can stick with that firm, you know, for the other phases of the project.
Wayne, Tri-County will put together a rating system? Is that typically how they do things?
Yes, there'll be a rating system. That's kind of been our policy as well. It might be tweaked a little bit as far as scoring. But then it'll be the responsibility of the selection committee to individually rate and then ultimately combine those ratings to help with the selection.
Any other discussion?
So the selection, those criteria that Mayor Phelan was talking about, looks like that's on 8.0 selection procedure where they talk about technical approach, firm experience, staff capabilities, workload, capacity, local presence. That was my concern right there, local presence. So I know here in Peoria Heights, we also have some civil engineering firms as well. When they say local presence, do they mean Peoria Heights? Or do they mean Peoria County? Do they mean Tri-County? Or do they mean Illinois?
Yeah, I don't necessarily like that term. Sometimes I, I like the term availability better. But, but a lot of firms will select local firms, meaning Peoria area firms, that know the area, you know, as part of the team, so. But I, but I, you know, from a, just a project management approach, I want to make sure that any consultants we're working with are available to work and, you know, actively involved and certainly understand the project, but, you know, availability is maybe a better term.
I understand that. And I, I think, you know, I think we've got a lot of good names here on this list. You know, Peoria Heights residents, board members that are hopefully going to look at some of our Peoria Heights, you know, firms that are based right here in our hometown that could also deliver some good jobs as well. So I, I think we've got a good team here.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Reichert?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Next is Resolution 2023-18, a resolution of the Village of Peoria Heights accepting an agreement for professional services with Hutchison Engineering for Construction Observation Services for the reconstruction of Paris Avenue. Trustee Kazam had asked for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve.
Second, please.
Second.
All right, go ahead, please.
So this has to do with Paris Avenue. As it says here, we have a lot of new development around that area and the Illinois Department of Transportation is requiring us to improve the infrastructure in that area. This has to do with the roadway, but we will also be looking at a traffic signal in that area. I'm going to turn this over to Wayne to explain it in more depth.
Right, so this is actually kind of part one agreement to what we're doing down there. We did select Hutchison from a group of three consultants that submitted proposals. So Paris is really, again, part one. So Paris is the village's jurisdiction entirely. So we needed to get somebody out there to help as soon as possible, so that's why, why we have this agreement. Actually, Paris has been under construction for about a week. So if you go down there, you'll see Paris, and this is adjacent to the Bex development, is under construction. So there's another part, and that's where IDOT really gets more involved because it's, War Memorial Drive is under their jurisdiction. And then Central Avenue, although it's the village's jurisdiction, it's kind of part of the same design as the intersection. So those designs aren't under construction yet, waiting for a final approval from IDOT on that. But that will, again, be an agreement with Hutchison Engineering. You'll see that hopefully at the next, your next meeting to help with the construction inspection and construction work for the intersection through, as required by IDOT.
Questions?
What changes, do we know what changes we have to make to Paris?
Paris, Paris won't be changed a lot. I think it's generally what it was as far as what we call geometrics, as far as the form of the road, but it will be concrete. And the reason for that is the road is getting older and there will be entrances to truck fueling stations off of Paris. So we decided along with the developer that it would be wise to make it concrete.
From Wisconsin all the way to Prospect?
Not all the way, just, just adjacent to the Bex development.
So from Illinois to Central?
Not all the way to Illinois.
I think it's about two-thirds of that block.
Yeah, it's about two-thirds.
From Central to, two-thirds towards Illinois.
So basically, it's a pretty elegant project. You leave the curbs in, the curb is in good shape and you replace the pavement surface. And then I think there'll be sidewalks adjacent to the development.
On both sides of the street?
Just on the north side.
Could that, could we put sidewalks on both sides?
It'd be pretty difficult now, but we could. I mean, in the future, certainly. The, the other improvements to the intersection, traffic signal improvements, lengthened turn lanes, things like that would be included.
Looks like there's already a sidewalk, isn't there?
There is. It'd be replaced adjacent to the development. Does there be new entrances and things like that?
Wayne, where, where is the traffic signal? Are we looking again near the quote-unquote development?
The, there's an existing traffic signal there at Monroe slash Central. So it's just upgrades to that traffic signal to comply with the increased traffic expectancy.
And the turn lanes, are we expect any kind of taking for that?
No, you mean as far as land acquisition? No. But that, the turn lane that's existing on the south side there on War Memorial, that will be extended.
Okay.
And sidewalks adjacent to the development again will be widened, which is something the comp plan called for as well. So, you know, I, as you've gone by there, the development's well underway, so anxious to get these road improvements complete. I think soon after that, we'll see.
Will they be able, also, they can't open until the road's done?
I don't think IDOT will allow them because they control the access.
I didn't realize that.
That will be an issue and it's just one of those things.
How quickly? This is just Phase One, isn't it?
Well, it's not, it's part one.
They'll never be able to open.
No, this is Paris, because we could start on Paris, so we're still waiting on IDOT approvals for the Central and the drive. But, and, you know, you're, you're correct. I mean, we're going into a winter season where construction's not as easily done.
They went through a similar situation in Washington as well, Bex.
With IDOT?
Yes.
And the reason for that is, is it just the weight of the vehicles?
It's time. Well, it's an upgrade to the, to the traffic signal, but also as far as the road, yes, because of the, the volume of traffic they're going to have there.
Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Reichert?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Just before we move on to miscellaneous, any committee chairs have anything they'd like to report on? If not, let's go right into miscellaneous.
I just have a couple of things, Mayor. Just bringing the board up to date. I've been working with council for establishing the fire pension board and also the fire commission, so I hope to have something for you by December 5th meeting, which is our next meeting. And also, the notification system is getting close to being implemented, so I would say that could also be on the December 5th meeting as far as an update. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other miscellaneous?
One question for Chief, so as far as budget process is, I know we're starting to get closer and closer to that. How are we looking there? Are we looking like we're going to be able to keep things steady or?
We'll be able to keep the lights on. We're doing well, but I do anticipate some other expenses that we did not budget for. I've had numerous meetings with Chief Decker as well, so I think that's going to be a big part of it. But I think we're, as far as running a surplus, I'm not sure how much of that's going to dig into that, so I'll have a better answer for you probably in the next month or so. But you and I will meet as we normally do in the public safety regarding kind of where we're at and what we're going to need to do on that.
Okay. And one thing that I saw, corporate replacement tax, the expectation has dropped on that as far as what we've gotten in the past versus what we're going to?
I was told that as well.
One quick thing, the, I know we have a count, or a board member from the chamber here. I wanted to thank the Peoria Heights Chamber. They put on a, their final event and I was invited to that as long, I think it's the entire community was invited. They did a great job. I see them out there right now working on the huts for the Christmas market. So I know we've got some good stuff coming up then, so thank you to the, the chamber for their continued efforts.
Thank you. Any other miscellaneous? Okay, we'll be back at comments from the audience if anyone has any comments on an agenda item. Public comments open again. Going once, going twice. Comments are closed. We'd be at payment of the bills. I'd ask for a motion to pay the bills.
Still moved?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to pay the bills. Are there any discussion on the motion or any question on any of the bills? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Reichert?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
The bills are paid. We would be at the treasures report. Madam Clerk?
As of the end of October, there was $8,212,622.27 in the village-controlled accounts, in the water-controlled accounts. There was $2,180,967.04.
You have heard the treasures report. I would ask for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the report. Any discussion on the motion? Questions on the report? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Reichert?
I'm sorry, aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Okay, the mo, the report is approved. Just like to take this time to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and if you're traveling, safe travels. Trustee Gett?
I'm making a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We're adjourned.